These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the Sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mast that jet into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
...
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, March 2nd, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagura?
Here. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to read the regular session minutes for February 16th, 2015, and the special workshop session of February 16th, 2015. Any modifications or issues? Any modifications to the agenda this evening?
Yes.
Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Mike Boginsky, Operations Manager for United Water here in Alpena. And I just wanted to update the council on our current situation with the water distribution system. After consulting with the city manager and city engineer today, we decided that it was best for the city and the system to put all city customers on a citywide run water notice. Our problem started back in the weekend of Valentine's Day. We had about 10 calls that weekend. Most of them, about 80% of them, were houses that froze up inside internally. And we gave people advice about how they could thaw the water safely. That next week, we started getting calls, four or five a day. And with the assistance of two welders, we had been able to keep up with thawing lines. Over this past weekend, we worked pretty much the entire weekend. We had a couple of water main breaks. And then this morning, we had 15 calls of services being frozen. And on Sunday in the afternoon, the one welder that we relied primarily on for thawing, we lost it. We lost two calls just from being overworked. So we're faced with a situation where we really don't have the equipment to thaw. And with the volume that is coming through, it's really in the best interest of the system to notify people that they should run their water a continuous stream. And there was a press release that went out today notifying people. In my time waiting from 5:00 when the office closed until I came here, I probably got 30 calls in the office, people asking questions. So hopefully, the word will get out and people will continue to run, not stop running. And that was part of the press release. We've had a lot of re-thaw's where we told people to run the water and they stopped for some reason. Either they have a child in the house and the child didn't realize and they're always told to shut the water off. They shut the water off like they're supposed to. Unfortunately, that makes for extra work for the utility. And last year, we had kind of the same situation. It was, in my mind, it was a more severe winter because it started earlier. It was the beginning of January when the cold weather started and it ran into February. This morning, I heard that February was the coldest month in Michigan on record. And it might be the United States, I'm not really sure. But we did have some extremely cold weather and we were hoping that we would get through it and we just had enough. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Do you want? Don't make it pretty much clear.
There'll be some additional treatment costs, obviously. To treat the water, you have to pump it, it costs power, you have to put chemicals in it. I don't think we'll have any trouble keeping up with the extra demand right now. Our demand is down. So again, we think that it's in the best interest of the utility and also in the safety of the employees. I add, one person worked 90 hours last week. And that just, you know, that just burns people.
Mike, what do you say to folks that didn't have a freeze when it was negative 30 and now that it's on the plus side? Why, you know, why would I worry about it now still?
When, we had a dig this week and the frost is down four feet. And the pipes are generally buried three and a half to four feet. Once that thaw gets into the ground, it takes a long time for it to thaw. And even with weather where you're getting warm weather and you're getting some thaw and some moisture going down into the soil, that can drive, actually drive the frost deeper. So that's why it's important that, once people start, they need to continue. Even if it looks like it's nice and warm outside and it's 45 degrees, the potential is still there for them to freeze.
What, can you tell us what the, what the formula will be so people can expect what their bill will be? Will it be, how will, if that's someone's concern?
The last time that we did a system-wide run, we based bills on the previous year's consumption. So whatever the customer used the previous year, that's what we would estimate their consumption to be.
And if they're a recent resident?
Then we'll probably have to set some kind of a 6,000 gallons or something like that. There used to be a minimum bill of 6,000 gallons. So it was either, it was either based on, and this was back in 94 when we had the last system-wide run.
Right.
It was based on their consumption the previous year or it was based on 6,000 gallons because we had a minimum bill of 6,000 gallons.
Okay.
And we, you know, we can, we can come up with whatever formula you think is fair. Well, the 6,000 gallons is a pretty fair number.
Yeah. If that's the department's normal procedure, that's fine. I just wondered what it was. Excellent. Mike, Mike? Anyone else? The consent agenda this evening, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $162,256.29. B is one city council reappointment to the City of Alpena Building Authority for a three-year term expiring March 2nd, 2018, is Bill Pfeiffer. C is one mayoral appointment to the, to the authority for brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2018, is Jim Claridge.
We approve the consent agenda presented.
Sir?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, presentations or anything until down to 11, communications and petitions. This evening, we have the Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast, or MACNE, informational report and budget request. We have Tim Kuhnlein is here.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the city council. And I want to start by thanking you for your public service and serving the public's interests. It's a very important concept, not only for our community but for the preservation of our republic. And this is a very important concept for me, being an instructor of government at the college. So thank you. I am Tim Kuhnlein, President of Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast, Art Town, Michigan. We've had a longstanding relationship with the city. And as you may recall, MACNE is our acronym, and the City of Alpena have a great history of collaboration. Some of our projects have been passed forth to the arts, three iterations of that, along with the Michigan Municipal League. The Art Trail roadmap, six groups in our town alone, one in Atlanta and one on its way again in Alpena. Our crowning achievement, I think, is the merging of our website with the US 23 Heritage Route website, which we'll speak of more this evening. We've held a series of summits going back to 2009 when MACNE was established. Our first meeting was at the Alpena County Library and the event was sponsored by the Thunder Barretts Council. Our most recent was this October 2014 at Besser Museum. And of course, we've adopted, MACNE has the Pocket Park next to the Owl. We sponsor the art park there. I approached the city council this evening on behalf of MACNE with the request of $5,000 budget allocation for the fiscal year 2015. MACNE is a 501(c)(6) organization, a nonprofit corporation registered with the State of Michigan. We are, we do not have our tax exemption status, nor do we want it. Our board has made an intentional decision not to compete with our partners who are, for the most part, nonprofit, tax-exempt organizations. Rather, our purpose as a collaborative organization is to build relationships and garner the resources to enable our partners towards their own missions. The mission of MACNE is to encourage interaction and collaboration among organizations that promote arts, culture, history, and humanities in Northeast Michigan. And to increase public awareness of opportunities for education and participation in events and activities related to the region. We are an all-volunteer board. There are 21 members of the board currently. And we have a working committee currently for our existing project of 20 members, many of whom overlap, but many who do not. Our members come from a cross-section of interests dedicated to placemaking, aesthetic improvements of our community, and the expansion of quality experiences in our region. We have two city council members serving on the board and the committee, the current committee. NEMCOG is represented with Denise Klein, serving on our board, and Mary Ellen Jones, who's present here this evening, serving on the NEMCOG, US 23 Heritage Management Council. So we have some cross-pollination across organizations. We have museums represented on these two boards, or the board and the committee. Besser Museum and the Sanctuary, of course, were founding members of MACNE back in 2009. We have art galleries, Art in the Loft and TBAC, Thunder Barretts Council were, of course, founding members of MACNE. And the city, of course, joined us later. We have theaters represented, convention and visitor bureaus, chambers and DDAs from Mackinac to Standish. NEMCOG is represented, that's the Northeast Michigan Artists Guild, Sunrise Artists of Michigan, otherwise known as SAMI, out of Towes Bay. Inspiration Alcona and Harrisville Arts Council are all represented on these roughly 40 people. We have trails, particularly the quilt trail and the art trail represented. The Lighthouse Festival is represented. Businesses of all sorts, from truly yours of Ascoto to model printing here in Alpena. The Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan is represented on our board and the committee. We have media representatives, the City of Alpena, and a number of other interests. It's our hope that the City of Alpena will bring more municipalities on board by example, example of the requests we're making here this evening. Like all nonprofits, we need money to realize our projects. And we're hoping to build momentum. Again, it's our hope that the city will contribute and be a leader, as it is, with further participation in this collaborative endeavor by leading by example and building on what we've done together already, the city and MACNE. The literature that you've been given prior to this meeting details for you the full scope of not only MACNE's history with you, but certainly MACNE's project, proposed project. You have a cover letter, the budget, the proposed budget, not only for MACNE but for the specific project that this money would predominantly finance. And then you also have a description of the program itself. I want to reveal now the poster for the Lake Huron, oops, it was off. It won't work. Oh, in any event, while I'm doing that.
If you hit open down at the bottom?
At the bottom.
Hit open down on the bottom.
That's right, that's where it's at, I'm sorry.
Open. There you go. Oh, is that it?
That worked too.
This is not the finished version. What you see on the screen is the proper coloration. But this is what it'll look like in full scale, for the most part. Just to give you an idea of the identity, it's a region-wide project. It's titled Lake Huron Discovery Tour, Chart Your Own Course. There's more to see on 23 and it'll be Hull Columbus Day Weekend, October 9th through the 12th of this year. The idea is that it will be a template for seasonal events, tours of this sort throughout other parts of the year, other times of the year. This is the other poster that will be used to promote the event, just to give a different image. And the artist in this is Ted Fines, he's here as well, serving on the committee. We're asking for a budget allocation of 5,000, but that's within the larger context. MACNE operates, as I said, as an all-volunteer board, but we have about $500 of annual expenses related to registering with the State of Michigan, filing tax documents and so forth. We're trying to solicit some $57,000 of cash or in-kind contributions for the Lake Huron Discovery Tour project specifically. So this is the newest project of MACNE, like the passport projects of the past. We so far have $11,400 of in-kind donations and we're seeking an additional $58,000 for this new project. MACNE itself is committed to finding some $5,000 through solicitations of its members. The Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan has been solicited for a $3,000 grant to support this project. We're coming to you as one of potentially five municipalities, or chambers, or CVBs, or DDAs in the region to contribute up to somewhere around $25,000 across those five types of organizations. And then five corporate sponsors. This would give us, as a projective, objective, the $58,000 that we need to seemingly do this the right way. The emphasis of this discovery tour is on external marketing of the region as a whole and as a destination for arts, culture, and so much more during a fine time of the year up here, you know. We really need to focus on a tier-two marketing strategy. We think we have the tier-one marketing strategy handled by social media and traditional marketing tools of our existing partners. And most of that is cost-free, priceless, as I indicate in the, in the budget. But the tier-two marketing strategy of getting the word outside of our community in a very punctuated way so that people outside of Northeast Michigan understand what we're all about and maybe access this opportunity to learn more, to discover more about us, is really what we're trying to garner here in the request for funding. Beyond just helping keep MACNE alive. I want to take you to the website, just quickly. This is the US 23 Heritage Route website. I think most of you are familiar with it. You can see the art trail, Art Town is indicated here, the counties. We don't really have time to go through all of that, but you can kind of see how the various areas of our community are represented. The greenways, the blue ways, the outdoor and farm activities, eating and shopping, arts and culture, active adventures. And here you see the discovery tour highlighted. We're currently in the process of soliciting some roughly 400 organizations, up and down 23, to plan events, coordinated events in the respective communities to create the impact for that weekend. For Alpena and for the region, this also happens to be the same weekend as the Lighthouse Festival. We have a member of the Lighthouse Festival on our committee and they're extremely enthusiastic about coordinating these efforts. It's going to add the punch power that they need to elevate that festival. So we're in the process of organizing the events and all of this will be done electronically. What we need to do is get the word out to the broader world. Targeted areas, data that we have from Denise Klein's statistics. Half a million viewers have viewed this website just this winter. And it's really interesting to look at the data, what they're looking at. So we have some interesting data to follow in terms of where to market, where to put the dollars that we can garner for this tier-two marketing strategy. So in conclusion, our objective in this request is to keep putting Alpena and the region on the map. We have to keep pounding the drum in order to be heard and discovered for all the major assets that we have here. We're investing in concepts that demonstrate that Alpena and Northeast Michigan are indeed desirable places to live and to work and to visit time and time again. We're just not known for a lot of this stuff. And what we're trying to do is elevate the awareness, like so many other organizations are trying to do already. This is really about volume. I know that you're cash-strapped, like any municipality is, but I would like you, as you contemplate including us in your budget, to think of MACNE as a partner, an extension of the city, a working committee, if you will, with a budget and the resources to leverage, like we did with the MML grant, which was, what, four times this amount. We're volunteers doing the work necessary for a vibrant community. We can help you achieve the fuller recognition of Alpena as part of this region. MACNE can squeeze a cow out of a dollar. We really maximize that.
I'd like to see that.
We really maximize that $20,000 that you invested with us. And I think you can see from some of us that those dollars are still working in very visible ways. What we want to do now is what was originally the intent of MACNE, and that is to be an organization focused on cross-promotion of existing organizations and their activities and get that word to the outside world as much as possible. We're interested in proving our aesthetic and experiential realities, not necessarily by our own, our own events, but by encouraging our partners to continue doing what they're doing and give them the proper elevated attention that they need to help put this place on the map to the outside world. We're working with the CVB here in Alpena and I was pleased to see that Mary Beth is coming up next. Mary Beth is on the committee as well. And we've got some exciting plans specifically for Alpena as part of this regional project. So let's further cement the relationship between MACNE and the City of Alpena by taking another step, let's say a voyage of discovery, towards enhancing our town and our region with the energy and the limited resources at our disposal. Let's see where we can take this journey yet again as we embark upon this new project. So with that being said, you have a lot of material in front of you. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or show you anything, explain the details if necessary.
I've got some questions. You said that you were asking other municipalities and such for the same amount, 5,000. How has the response been? Have you, have you actually made an actual request as of yet or?
You guys are leading.
We're leader, okay.
No pressure.
I've been the leaders in the past on this note. You know, there is, dare I say, a little secret around here that, particularly in the arts community, there has not been a whole lot of cooperation, I understand. I've been here 15 years and I know there have been attempts in the past to try to do some of this stuff and they've kind of fallen. And we know how communities work. There's the side effect in all of this, there's turf. But I, I think that we've made some huge progress, not only in the arts community but across the spectrum and particularly with our relationship with the city in demonstrating through leadership. And we're kind of hoping that you guys will kind of be the green light to say to other communities that might be a little more hesitant, let's jump on board because this could really muster some grassroots.
Now, you're going to go to the county and the township and give them that signal. We need you guys to lead.
There are plans to go to Towes and Harrisville. Those we have representatives who are going to take that initiative, like I am here. And we're pushing Cheboygan and Mackinac. We have the representative from Mackinac Chamber or, I don't know, the committee. But you guys are really going to be the telltale sign of whether this is worth your time.
I know it's, as you said earlier, one of the things that's very tough is it is a very cash-strapped time and I don't need to tell you that because you're right involved with us. And I'm a strong supporter of the arts and I know if there was any way possible that, you know, I'd love to be able to support this as well. And we'll do everything I possibly can. We just, as council knows, last week we had a capital improvement meeting. And there's more projects on there again than we have money for. And finding even an extra $5,000 or $10,000 is very, very tough. But I would encourage management that if, in any way, that the other governmental entities donate anything to this, that we at least try to match that amount the best that we possibly can. I would rather, obviously, this request than the next one, I'd rather spend the $10,000 on this than I would on the fall elections that we have coming up. And you all know exactly where I stood on that, so. But just thought I wanted to put that out there. And I know we've got a lot of bills, but this is, this is really something that, to me, if you don't have art, art is what really makes life worth living, in my view. So I think we have to do our very best to approve this if we can, in any way.
I would just add to that, you know, it's our intent that as this may grow and people realize the side effects of this, the outcome of this, that there are other avenues in the future, if we could get this sort of jumpstart, that particularly grants with the state level. But we've missed all those deadlines. And if you've ever done it, it's very time-intensive and quick-rent-hood. It probably wouldn't get done in this, even if we had a deadline that we could meet at this point. But we don't want to miss this opportunity. You know, the short of this is if we don't get the cash to do the second-tier marketing, we can still do something, but it's not going to reach that outside world to generate the type of economic activity that we're hoping this could. So I fully appreciate what you're saying.
Don't know if you know or not, oh, I'm sure you do, this fall, the Michigan Municipal League in October has the convention twice a year. Is there an avenue there for, to get the word out, to have free ads, to do something?
There very likely is. I know that the Governor's Economic Conference is coming up soon and Tom Moran will be speaking on our behalf at that summit.
Excellent.
In fact, these posters will be displayed, particularly the one that's on the website. And this is all part and parcel of Denise Klein's efforts through NEMCOG and the Heritage website. So I don't see any reason why that couldn't be reinforced at the MML conference. Do you know what month that is?
Yes, it is.
I just heard.
It's in March.
You mean the annual conference?
Oh, the, the March conference.
The Capitol Conference.
The Capitol Conference will be in the fall.
No, well, the Capitol Conference is this month.
Right, and then we go again.
Is the fall conference in Traverse City.
So there are two opportunities.
By the way, I would think that MML would be extremely interested in helping By the way, I would think that MML would be extremely interested in helping elevate the discussion on this because of the investment they made in the city.
Exactly.
I mean, we were highlighted prominently statewide for some of the other projects, and this is, I mean, their investment is now continuing to materialize. So, yeah, we can make it happen.
Don't know how to help, but I will be attending the conference, and you, are you going to the Capitol Conference?
March.
And if there's anything I can do to help, you'd be happy to do that.
I'd love to keep in touch about that.
I guess this is my note and request to staff would be to, you know, I would like to be the leader in this. I'd like Alpena to be the leader in this. With what we can budget, we've talked for decades about, okay, how do we get people off of 75? How do, you know, how can we get all of these communities that you show on that map to get together and say, "This is how we're all going to come together to get people to take 23 from Standish to Mackinac," and this is, seems to be about the only thing that's worked. In quite some time, that is a collaboration of all of these communities, so I have no issue whatsoever of being the leader in as much as we can put in our budget, obviously. Obviously, in order to put something in our budget, probably got to take something out of our budget, or make something less priority, so whether it's $5,000 or $2,500 or whatever that amount is, I guess my point would be that if that's getting people off of 75 and coming to Alpena, and Mary Beth could probably give us the statistics about how much the average person spends on a weekend in the communities that they stop in, and so I can justify that money being spent. Sometimes it's the difficult part of justifying, "Well, we've spent $5,000, so taxpayers' money." But if you can justify how many people come here because there is a billboard of a collaborative effort between every community to get people off 75, it's easier for me, so.
We've jokingly talked about having billboards along 75 with a handkerchief pointing in this direction, saying, "Hey, we're over here." Which is our slogan, but that's just kind of a joke right now, because a billboard can run $10,000.
For sure. Yeah, I use that as a, I mean, in our magazines, and I'm sure that, I think I read that a significant part of your budget is, looks like, marketing strategy, so. But, yeah, I'm kind of a silent advocate, I'm not really in the arts community, nor am I sit on your board, but definitely an advocate of getting people into our community.
Well, I think Mary Beth said it's $50 a head a night. If you come to Alpena.
It's about $170 per person if they stay overnight.
If they stay overnight. I was going to say factor in daytime, and what is that?
Yeah, usually people stay at least, on average, three days.
Pretty good.
So, pretty good numbers.
It's an investment worthwhile.
But unless somebody else has got anything, questions? Apparently the two without questions sit on the board.
I didn't want to sound like a ringer, but you guys kind of took care of that.
Thank you, Tim, I appreciate it.
I just need to log out my personal email.
I'll leave it up there.
We'll send you something in the morning.
Karen, do you need a receiving file, or?
We haven't been.
Okay.
If I could just log out of this and track the budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. Next up, Convention and Visitor Bureau on behalf of the Alpena Brand Alliance, informational report and a budget request as well.
Am I able to hook up my laptop, or?
Rich, I don't know.
I don't know, are you?
That's all right. That's all right.
We have, we have what you have, more than likely.
No, you don't.
Oh.
Is it just a, I have an HDMI input?
Can you pull something out of the other computer, including yours, or? Steve's not here, so.
That'd easily done.
Okay, I'm just going to pull up one quick thing, and then I'll get into the nuts and bolts here.
You have to tell jokes or something while you're there. I just put up Tim's email while we're waiting.
I'm Mary Beth Stutzman from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I am appreciative of you being able to put me on the agenda tonight, because what I talk about is extremely important to the entire movement of the community, not just the city of Alpena, most certainly the city of Alpena, but really the greater Alpena community as well. So, back in 2011, the Chamber, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau, not myself, I was not here at that time in this position, but the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the city of Alpena joined together to lead Alpena down a new path, and it's a path that was, that we needed to take. It took a lot of money, and what resulted from that is our Alpena Sanctuary of the Great Lakes brand. We invited Roger Brooks from Destination Development International to come in and assess our community, not just the city, but the entire area, and tell us what he thought. As an outsider looking in, why would someone want to visit Alpena? We know tourism is an extremely lucrative industry. We'd never really thought of ourselves as a tourism community until this point, so tell us how to do it. And it's exactly what he did. He provided us with an amazing identity that, so far, I have yet to meet someone that doesn't agree with it, Alpena being the sanctuary of the Great Lakes, a place where you can find rest and relaxation and rejuvenation, in harmony with the natural environment, the outdoors, an untouched, pristine wilderness, in the midst of Wi-Fi connectivity. We have what everyone is looking for in that type of escape. So with that, we were given a very large booklet of recommendations that included everyone. No stone was left unturned in terms of things that could be fixed or addressed, or maybe just looked at a little bit differently. Included everything from someone needs to paint their sign, to, hey, maybe we should think about taking the barbed wire off of the fairgrounds fence. So we looked at everything. This firm provided us with a very thorough review, and, so this is going back to 2011. Since then, a lot of work has been done within the community with some core volunteers, some early adopters, to start implementing this throughout the community. We've seen some early successes, like the city of Alpena is using their new logo, their new sanctuary logo, on their trucks and their jackets, and I've seen Don wearing his jacket around. I think he was one of the first, is he here today?
Yes.
He was one of the first, I believe, to get it on his jacket. Yay, Don. So we've seen some organizations infusing the brand as it fits with their mission, like the DDA has used it, the Chamber has used it, the city has used it, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary has used it for a lot of their activities where it fits. And all of that are wonderful successes to show that this one is here to stay. I know we've gone down this road before, but this one makes sense. This one is here to stay. This one has traction, and it has staying power, and it has buy-in. Buy-in not only from the municipalities or government agencies, but also from the communities and the citizens. So we've seen a couple of, you know, really great successes coming out of this, whether it is solely because of this whole branding thing, or it's just because it came at a time when we were starting to work together a little bit better. We've seen, what is the number now, 40-plus million dollars of new investment and developments happening around the community. We've seen increases in tourism, and just a greater community awareness, and I think the pride in Alpena is growing. We're no longer hearing so much, "Oh, why would you come here? There's nothing to do here." We're hearing, "Hey, let me show you this," or, "I can't believe I went and out and did that last weekend, I forgot that was here." So awareness has increased, we're seeing new development, money is coming back to the community. So I'd like to, before we move on into what my request is about this evening, I'd like to show you the Alpena that we are talking about. Is there sound? Is there any sound on this?
Rich, is there sound?
Should be.
I should have brought a tech guy, sorry.
Hit the sound button. Looks like it's off all the way.
What a make for Steve to take off, huh?
Don't be saying this. It's... It's me. Did I have my Facebook page out? So that is the Alpena that we're talking about, the Sanctuary of the Great Lakes. And it's time now, we've come to a point where we need to take that next step. We need to start broad-scale infusion of this Sanctuary of the Great Lakes brand, the Sanctuary of the Great Lakes feeling, the Sanctuary of the Great Lakes lifestyle that we all know, and infuse it to the greatest extent across the community. So what this means is that we have taken a look at some of the areas that we need to address. We need it to be a grassroots effort, we need funding to get stuff done, we need accountability so that things are on task, they're on track, they're continuing to move forward, and that we're talking about community-wide projects. So, in order to do this, we really took a good, hard look at how things have been going so far since the initial analysis was done, and then where we need to go from here, and maybe look at where some things need to be strengthened. So what we discovered was that we can easily accomplish this with some work teams. Things that hold up the brand are culture, heritage, and arts, environmental stewardship and protection, we need to take care of our surrounding natural areas because it is what, they are what make us who we are, and recreation and well-being. Alpena is a Mecca for silent sports activities, and developing more along that line will serve us well. So what we have developed is taking a look at the volunteers we've had so far, the early adopters, and compartmentalizing, or not really compartmentalizing, but broadening the approach in an orderly fashion. So we have focus and we have direction on creating new initiatives and new projects that don't currently exist, but relate to the brand, so that we can really take this to the next level. Because we can sit in a room and talk about it all day, but that doesn't really get a whole lot done in the way of building our community into something better. So, this is that next step. We are pretty excited about it. So for example, we use the example of the discovery tour that Tim was talking about. That is something that is perfectly in line, although he didn't know it at the time, because this is the first time he's hearing about it, something that would fit perfectly with the culture, heritage, and arts action team. The idea is to create something that doesn't exist, create something that fits with the brand, and perpetuates this lifestyle that we are trying to promote and live up to, and develop it, put it into action, allow some money to go towards it, and give the team the empowerment and autonomy to get it done. So, Tim has already done that in one section. We have other things that could be done, like writers' weekends or retreats, artists' work retreats for a weekend. Things that the environmental stewardship action team would be tasked with would be things like cleaning up the beaches, improving access to natural areas, recreation and well-being, doing more, having maybe a silent sport seminar, or a workshop weekend to bring people. Maybe the idea of a dog park would suit them, and they would work together to come up with the plan, and then approach an advisory team that would be made up of representatives from the city, the Chamber, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the county, the township, who would then say, "Say, yes, it fits. Here's the money you need to get it done," like a safety check to make sure things are really in positive directions. The membership of all of these action teams would be a variety of existing organizations that make sense. So, for example, Art in the Loft would certainly be included in the Heritage Arts and Culture to have a representative. But then 50% of the rest of the membership would come from the citizens of the area. So, your neighbor, your aunt, your, you know, your doctor, could be anyone, someone who is interested in giving back to their community on another, on another level. So, not all of this is hammered out, because a lot of it will come down to who is in place on these teams, because they will be helping decide what does this need to look like, because this is all brand-new. The Convention and Visitors Bureau will be providing facilitation and continuity between each work team so that they all know what each other is doing. So if maybe they're working on the same project, they just don't know it, we'd bring them together so that there would be more energy to put towards that project. Maybe they come to us and they have an idea for a dog park, and lo and behold, the city has already been working on it. So all that needs to happen is a couple I's dotted and T's crossed, and the project is complete. After, we've looked at a lot of other models from a lot of other communities. I talked with Roger Brooks, the consultant that came and looked at Alpena, and discussed with him where we are at, where we need to go, how do we need to move to this next level. So he helped develop this. So what we are asking for...
With that picture.
Volunteers, right?
Yeah. Well, volunteers is amazing, yes. We are also asking for $5,000. We are respectfully requesting $5,000. We know that it was, with the help of the city, this would not have happened in the first place. I know a grant was written to help provide funding for this. The CVB put in a ton of money to help bring this here, and so you may have a vested interest in making sure that it goes further, it continues to develop, and these ideas continue to come to fruition, and these new, this new face that we already know is there, this new face that we can shine and polish out of the community comes back to the surface. Where the money will go, the budget is extremely simple, I don't have any complicated charts and graphs. The budget is straight for projects. No staff time is being paid for out of this. We have Jessica Smith, who is our vice president at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, she has been around on full-time now. A large part of her responsibilities will be making sure that everything is in order with meeting minutes and times, and facilitating a lot of the logistical things that go along with something like this. So we'll be absorbing that cost. The money will be held within the CVB, and will be reported out regularly. And we have put in $10,000. The CVB has shifted over $10,000, where we don't decide what happens to that money, these work teams decide what happens to that money. The Chamber of Commerce has put in, or, I'm sorry, we put in...
You said 10.
Five.
Okay.
Remember.
I think your thing said you were five.
We put 10 into something else. We put ten into something else I was talking about earlier today. New Alpena Welcome Sense, by the way. That's what we put ten thousand dollars towards. The, the Chamber of Commerce has put in five, we have put in five. We are requesting that the city also put in five. I will also be meeting with the county and the townships to request their input as well because it really does involve everyone. It starts within the city. Pretty much anything good that happens in Alpena has a positive effect on the city. And we know that we are the hub of a four-county region. Anything we can do to be stronger and, and more sustainable is going to help every other community within arm's length. So it's extremely important that we see this through to the end. It might not be for thirty years when we decide it's the end, but it's important that we continue the momentum and to do that, a few more steps need to be taken. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's about it for my presentation.
I have some.
Okay.
You want me to go first?
Be my guest.
I'm, I'm pretty much aware of what the branding effort was. It was kinda started up right, right around when I was elected. Went to some of the presentations. I think it's a great idea. I really enjoy it, actually. I think that the branding thing is what we needed. I listened to what the guy said and what you're kinda saying is what, part of what he said was that you can call yourself Sanctuary of the Great Lakes, but when people come here and they expect that, you have to fulfill the promise, which is what you're now doing more of. It seemed to have been, I hesitate to say dormant, but maybe, I can't think of any other word, but there hasn't been a lot of movement on the branding effort in a while and...
Well, there hasn't been a lot of movement in, in what you're familiar with.
In what I am, right, okay, yeah. Very, thanks for correcting me.
I thought this was a new chapter.
So, and, and you are, my first question was, I was aware of who the, like branding, you're calling it a leadership team or a leadership?
The Leadership Advisory Council.
The Advisory Council, is that the same people that were kind of on the team before?
What you were talking about, the leadership team is being restructured into this.
Okay, the, the action.
So that there is, so that there are specific focuses and directions and that the, the energy is being placed on creating projects and implementing those projects.
Okay. So where there was a, a small council before, I'm not sure what you, what it was called, was it the BLT?
That was the BLT.
The BLT is no longer pretty...
Well, they are, they're here.
Oh, they're, but they're here now, okay. Who, who would you say is the face of the branding effort? Will that be the CBB?
The Convention and Visitors Bureau owns the copyright to the branding materials.
Okay.
Big key for most of it, so if you need to put a face to it, it would be the CBB as an organization. It really is important that it is a grassroots community effort, so there is not one person that is a poster person for the effort because in, in talking with the consultant, it's critical that the community buys into it and that the community feels like they are, in a sense, allowed to participate. And, and so making everyone a champion for it is how to perpetuate that.
Okay. That makes sense. My other question was, as I read this and then you, and you went over the, the teams again, they, maybe other council members may have noticed as well that they coincide very closely with some of the visioning committees that the city has now. Granted that's, those committees are city-oriented and not community-oriented so much as to say, you know, that you will be broadening out into the Alpena Township and the county and whatnot. So, but I guess my question was, do you, are you aware of those, is the team aware of those committees so you know how, like, one of the last things you mentioned was, if someone's already working on something, it might be one of those committees when it comes to the city. I can't answer for the county, but the city.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Part of the way that this is now restructured on the Advisory Council, the Advisory Council is not a working council now. They are merely people who have access to more money and, and know what's going on. So, for example, Greg would be one of those people. So if a, if a work team has an idea for a project, before they get too far down the road of doing anything, they, they bring the project to the council and say, this is what we want to do, we need this much money. And, and we look at it and Greg says, oh, you know, good news, we're, we're already working on something like this, or we can provide a little bit of engineering support, or we know that this entity over here is doing something.
Okay.
Things, things like that. So it was designed so that it will help reduce some of those redundancies.
Okay, 'cause that was a concern I had. Greg would certainly know what those committees on our end are doing.
Yeah.
And any other projects, so.
Should I just give an engineer a job?
That's what he's afraid of.
Yeah, yeah, he was trying to just sink down a little bit.
Well, a lot of it, and I don't know, again, I would certainly ask the, the staff to look for that, look for that possibility of, of that, of your request as far as the monetary portion goes, but there again, i- in, in the event that we don't, that we're not able to, to, to budget that specific amount, you know, five thousand or whatever, if that were, and Rich would probably echo the same thing, is that if, if that project that you need funding for is within the city limits and it's a renovation to a park, or it's a, or it's a, an improvement of taking the barbed wire off of fairgrounds isn't ours, but something that's ours.
They know that, by the way. They took care of that.
Something like that, that's city-related, then he would be able to try and budget that in the city's budget at that time, like move it or find it in another budget that's already established for that type of improvement, so I think there's always room for that.
Mm-hmm. That, that's part of the reason why it is, is, has been restructured the way it is, so that work teams can focus solely on getting work done, creating new ideas, working on implementing them. And it might not always be a project, it might be a, a marketing campaign of some sort.
Right.
It might not always be, you know, mortar and brick project, but that they would have access to people whose sole responsibility is to help them get it done. And whether that means hooking them up with someone else who already has knowledge of that, or with a budget line on that they didn't know existed, or that something you've been trying to get done for years, but just haven't had this, this staff available to do it.
Sure, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's really, it's really wide open and, and we view this as very much a living organism. So, just like we are doing now, we are readjusting the sales so that we can further spread this and accomplish things that need to be accomplished. Two years down the road, if, if we sit down and reevaluate and decide we may need to make a couple of adjustments, we will do so. We, we hope to come to you regularly and give you regular mini updates, not this long, just so that you are aware of what's going on, because you did invest heavily in the beginning. You helped write a very significant grant to help the CBB bring this. So it, it is important that you know what's going on on a regular basis.
Just a comment more than a question. You know, Target and Chamber get a lot of love, deservedly so, for, for development. I just wanted to take a chance to, to point out that you and Tim Koonline both probably contribute to this community as, as much as any two single people I know, as far as being involved in a lot of different activities, so appreciate that. And I did kinda want to reiterate that, that you're right, things are better here. And, and as the mayor said, I think that the sanctuary theme is, is well-received and appropriate and, and better than, more effective than, than ones we've had in the past. So, I do think those are positive movements. I think part of the reason for his success is that organizations like MACNE and, and the CBB realize that economic development's not just business and industry. We obviously, as a council, invest a lot in Target. I think we're all pretty satisfied with the results and what they've been able to do. They pretty much focus on business and industry as an economic driver, but MACNE brings in arts and culture as an economic driver. Your organization can bring in tourism as economic driver. I think when you're growing a community and trying to change their identity and lower the, the average age of the population, it takes, you know, all those different branches. So, I think it'd be an interesting discussion when we talk about budget and how to spend our money and where to put it, but certainly to invest in business and industry is a precedent. I would be very supportive of, of both MACNE and our request to at least take that discussion seriously, because it does bring money back to the community. So, just wanted to tell you, we appreciate you guys and what MACNE does, just every bit as much as we do the Chamber and Target Alpena as well.
Any other questions?
No. Just a quick comment too, is I agree with Sean on that aspect too. I think when you're building the foundation, that you have to have all of those, including the CBB and the Chamber and, and Target as well, along with MACNE. You know, so I too would be looking forward to the discussion because I think it can be found, I'd like it to be found, it's supportable for these as well, so.
We should probably give Adam some love, this is, the city's arm, you know, planning and development as well, but he, he already hears us say good things about it, so.
I, I really appreciate that. Most people have no idea what a CBB is, let alone what they do. And most of our work is done outside of the community, so people in the community never see any, anything that we do because our, our main mission is to increase the awareness of Alpena with the outside world, so outside of our four-county area. We barely do any marketing or anything within the four counties. Our secondary mission, which we are starting to become more diligent with, is helping build the internal tourism infrastructure of the community, so that's where this comes in. It hasn't been something that this office has always focused on because they just, they really didn't have the resources, the staff weren't the money to do so. But in doing that, it's not just about tourism, it makes the community, it makes the city better for us because we do a lot of the things that Tim had talked about, creating a sense of place, building, building an infrastructure that is great for visitors means it's great for local residents as well. And when you have those two things, great places to live and great places to visit are also great places to relocate business.
That's right. Building your foundation starts right there.
Yeah, with the brewery. They, they came here on a vacation and now they're opening a brewery here, so.
I know, I love this word.
Yeah, that's a great story.
I was like, are you kidding me? Like, is this for real? This is, this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to share one piece of information, doesn't really fit anywhere, but at the last sanctuary meeting, they gave the final numbers for the number of tourists the sanctuary's brought here, and they brought ninety-seven thousand people here last year. You know, some of those probably are from here, but that's a big, you know, big bump and another positive, you know, stuff.
That's amazing. Excellent.
We have done with the business.
I'm O'Veager.
To a closed session.
To a closed session, sorry.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.